The game so cold but I'm so hot. Same old shit, still on the block. Same young nig came up in the trap, I'm dope boy fresh with dope boy night. Dope boy fresh with dope boy night. Same young nig came up in the trap, I'm dope boy fresh with dope boy night. The game so cold but I'm so hot. Same old shit, still on the block. Same young nig came up in the trap, I'm dope boy fresh with dope boy night. The game so cold but I'm so hot. Same old shit, still on the block. Same young nig came up in the trap, I'm dope boy fresh with dope boy night. Dope boy fresh with dope boy night. Same young nig came up in the trap, I'm dope boy fresh with dope boy night. I'm dope boy fresh with dope boy night. Now they gramming it straight to the block. Pyrex this water walk till it's hot. Listen up and look turn it little to the lot. Right hand on the cell phone taking orders. Left hand three sticks loaded to the lot. Blue Holland tip gas switches on the Glock. State gang true sippers can't be stopped. Laughing at you haters why I'm stumbling through the paper says long let you bottom watch you meet me at your top. That nigga ain't shit he ain't get that a lot. Won't be deterred and I won't be stopped. Shaq Diesel number one I post up on the block. 24/7 cuz the hustle don't stop. 31 flavor take an order like a waiter I be selling more gas than a local truck stop. 1200 strong four pounds of desire. Got me shining, I'm a star. Ask about me, I am legend. They gon' tell you who we are. Fuck these niggas, fuck these bitches. Get money, all I know. No love for these bitches, never save me. These hoes. The game so cold but I'm so hot. Same old shit, still on the block. Same young nig came up in the trap, I'm dope boy fresh with dope boy night. Dope boy fresh with dope boy night. Same young nig came up in the trap, I'm dope boy fresh with dope boy night. The game so cold but I'm so hot. Same old shit, still on the block. Same young nig came up in the trap, I'm dope boy fresh with dope boy night. Dope boy fresh with dope boy night. Same young nig came up in the trap, I'm dope boy fresh with dope boy night. When I'm thinking bout the past yeah I gone get some nights gang we at the spot. If we ever was short then it's back to the block you probably get shot. Every day the certain change we getting money that's one thing that's never gon' stop. Real dope boys do what it takes. Playing high stakes living to die. Do your time keep it quiet no matter who you are don't get what you got. Stack it up stack the bundle stay fresh. All they think that you're not. Take you roll with a hoe they gon' let you go somebody just said you ain't hot. Just as fast as yourself no worry bout nobody else there ain't no handout. If you say slang put it on chain let them see you ain't tied down. Got a couple rags did a lot of things I ain't really gon' talk about it. Feel me and trade bitch you get some gold she gon' show up and show out. So don't ask me where the dope at cuz you already around. The game so cold but I'm so hot. Same old shit, still on the block. Same young nig came up in the trap, I'm dope boy fresh with dope boy night. Dope boy fresh with dope boy night. Same young nig came up in the trap, I'm dope boy fresh with dope boy night. The game so cold but I'm so hot. Same old shit, still on the block. Same young nig came up in the trap, I'm dope boy fresh with dope boy night. Dope boy fresh with dope boy night. Same young nig came up in the trap, I'm dope boy fresh with dope boy night.
Whole team shining we stars Big Dipper. Get a lot of haystack gang in the sipper. Niggas ain't real nigga you gotta feel me nigga. Smiling my face behind my back you trying to kill me nigga. You say you got beef then what you wanna do? You screaming fuck me nah nigga fuck you. He ain't hardin' me. Cup of kick dough cup of robbery. Nigga get extorted get aborted he don't pay the fee. Posted in the north got the two to four recipe. I be cooking chicken bit not talking raw disser rich. I got all my haters mad I know that they sick of me. Who the fuck he think he is motherfucking MBG I honestly. Pay him no attention they up under me. Haters call me visa cuz I'm everywhere they wanna be. Ladies man catch me with more hundreds than a bumblebee. Say she got a husband but she always wanna suck a D. State gang true sipper who these niggas wanna be? I been getting money since a youngin' I been pushing peace stay strapped. Gotta watch your back when you in the streets friends turn to foes never know who your enemy. I was in Detroit can't keep the same energy. Westside down the slide I don't think he feeling me. I was on some demon time nigga talking bout killing me. There no Benny let's see all that shit that you gon' do to me. Come outside why you scared I thought that you been a D. We don't blow we pulling up we different down in Tennessee. Riding through the city I'm with it I got my nine. Memphis really fitted let's get it I got the gang lock. Green and white square been serving them on the same block. Damn peace with me she foreign she come from Bangkok. Riding through the city I'm with it I got my nine. Memphis really fitted let's get it I got the gang lock. Green and white square been serving them on the same block. Damn peace with me she foreign she come from Bangkok. I got an old school bitch call her Aretha. Shawty so fine Shawty she a keeper. Smoke that reefer preferred by the quarter. I do this for my kids my sons and my daughter. Get treated like a king. Hoes call me sire. One look like Lotto the other look like Maya. My plug he ain't playing he only talking the numbers. I cop it whip it and shit and my money coming in bundles. Different flavors of kush orange grape and apple. If a nigga trap me it's gon' be a disaster. Dope money and bitches pimp robbers and snitches it's all in my hood. My homies say that I'm gifted I really can't complain. She is starting to change a product of mine. Vibe man tell me who can I blame? Neck like a glacier bought my Shawty a bracelet. Money go get her that's why these niggas be hatin'. Riding through the city I'm with it I got my nine. Memphis really fitted let's get it I got the gang lock. Green and white square been serving them on the same block. Damn peace with me she foreign she come from Bangkok. Riding through the city I'm with it I got my nine. Memphis really fitted let's get it I got the gang lock. Green and white square been serving them on the same block. Damn peace with me she foreign she come from Bangkok. Riding through the city I'm with it I got my nine. Memphis really fitted let's get it I got the gang lock. Green and white square been serving them on the same block. Damn peace with me she foreign she come from Bangkok. Riding through the city I'm with it I got my nine. Memphis really fitted let's get it I got the gang lock. Green and white squares been serving them on the same block. Damn peace with me she foreign she come from Bangkok. Whole team shining we stars Big Dipper. Get a lot of haystack gang in the sipper.
No oh no oh no oh. Nigga don't talk no more. Niggas don't walk no more. Niggas don't want no smoke. They saying my name look in the mirror. Shout it three times and I might appear. These niggas is lame die for the fame. We routed my ship like a buck a mirror. I play my position trust my intuition. Move when it's time like the minute hand. I'm snoozing the clock I be tired man. I run up the check like a Nike fan. I get it to go I Uber my eats bread on the move. Say what you want I'm making my plays. I'm deaf to the drama I don't give a fuck. I blocked out the chatter my pockets got fatter. I'm serving them up like a tennis ball. I'm closer to Nana I can't hear it all. I'm killing them easily venting off. I carry my cannon cuz niggas be plotting. Watching and planning they wildin' out. You thinking it's sweet get tripped off the streets. Now pussy they be only dialing out. The heart of the head the soft of the air. Grandma told you go take a seat. I'm pitching my pennies I wanted a banner. You rapping and broke or talking cheap broke. Speaking in riddles your vocab is little. Passing out threats like a pipe thud. What you saying is kept tag on your head chewing your code with a price gun. They claiming they grown but ain't got they own a code with a phone. Pocket dial in all of the movies the villain gon' die him all alone. Joker smile. No oh no oh no oh. Nigga don't talk no more. Niggas don't walk no more. Niggas don't joke no more. No oh no oh oh no. Niggas don't talk no more. Niggas don't walk no more. Niggas don't want no smoke. No oh no oh no oh. Niggas don't talk no more. Niggas don't walk no more. Niggas don't joke no more. No oh no oh no oh. Niggas don't talk no more. Niggas don't walk no more. Niggas don't want no smoke. If mama die he apologize he's not cool he's televised. I tell a lie just a lie a lie his pants on fire no lie a lie. Fuck friends fuck family fuck niggas a lot of enemies. He go back and forth with the best of them. Straight drop he testing them. All my niggas they gang bang if you don't see me with them we insane gang. Number one rule no hatin' man. Niggas man about donations man. No 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 no. JJ ain't pull up yet Nike on my feet he ain't got no chat. Pussy ass nigga still living in the shit. Niggas don't walk no more. Certified through the group the Mac like a pro. Posted up pocket full of dimes with the stove. Listen double up got nothing for the low. Clothes out sell everything gotta go. Yes sir everything gotta go. I used to be cool with a nigga from the south but he always run his mouth packing just like a hoe. Now what bitch put it all on the floor? Better watch your mouth if you know you a hoe. Blessing all black queer killers if it's dope make a ghost. Got the mob bitch I really want the smoke. Now what nigga you a pussy you a joke. Send a four shots like a nigga rapper folk. Blessing all black queer killers if it's dope make a ghost. Got the mob bitch I really want the smoke. It's state gang. No oh no oh no oh. Nigga don't talk no more. Niggas don't walk no more. Niggas don't joke no more. No oh no oh oh no. Niggas don't talk no more. Niggas don't walk no more. Niggas don't want no smoke. No oh no oh no oh. Niggas don't talk no more. Niggas don't walk no more. Niggas don't joke no more. No oh no oh no oh. Nigga don't talk no more. Niggas don't walk no more. Niggas don't want no smoke.
Motion to approve a hit from a special meeting on October 30th of 2023. Is there motion?
Motion.
Alright, there's a motion second in this session. Alora. Trusty Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trusty Gray Everett?
Yes.
Vice Attorney. Yes, motion passed. Next, is there a motion to approve the general? File against?
I would like to make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alright, I would like to... .......................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................... Yeah, I don't know what's going on. I was not in the damn studio. Mika, I've been seeing your comment. I thought I had unmuted myself and all that shit. I ain't in the damn queue. So again, I done went off twice about the live that just went on. I'm not finna repeat the shit no more. I guess this divine intervention saying nigga shut the fuck up. But I will just say that do it fluid got niggas acting up. You know what, I have to repeat. Do I have to repeat? I see it. Do I? Cuz it was about the live that was going on like so. I just found a whole bunch of hypocrisy in everything that I heard cuz niggas just think they different. I heard the fuck the sippers in the state gang and I'm cool with that. Blah 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 yada yada yada. I understand what it is. But I just have to point out why he's saying fuck us. His wife on the other hand is cheerleading and saying yeah good job. And JJ your live is about trading. You be bringing trade to my husband and so she's constantly saying my name. And then she's saying truth names and like good job truth in the way. Shoot you bodied UP. Ma'am she was bodying UP when your ass was over here. Ain't nothing new. There's nothing fucking new under the sun. It's just all the people y'all linked up with cuz of the hatred for us. Y'all are falling out with them. That nigga ain't never thought to record me on a goddamn phone. Didn't said that I love you. Hit niggas up about whack ass music all the time wanting to do that shit. But recording? No. Like all that you be arguing with women and you be doing it? Yeah you knew all that and you still dropped that dumbass song with them. So, I mean why you? Anywho, but yeah. And just so there's no confusion. Where I'm not under any inclination that his wife liked truth of me or any of that shit. Just playing the game. It's just saying the shit to get them people mad cuz they ain't fucking with him no more. That's what happens on there. That is what it is. But yeah. I just I be getting free promo that's where I'm the goat. I be somewhere I had no idea JJ did a live and it was about me until I heard Anaya say it. And then, that's what I'm saying even in they live my name just has to come up. It's amazing how my name just have traction all goddamn day whether I'm on this motherfucker or not. Whether I'm talking about this shit or not it just happens. It still never ceases to amaze me. Yeah, the live was full of hypocrisy and all of that. I ain't saying they was lying but yeah it's... It was full of hypocrisy. I'm just I'm interested cuz he said no he said it was gonna be one response but he lied. Yeah he lied it's just gonna be more than one response. And then I just... But I can't... Somehow I'm some... I'm sure I'll hear the recordings some way. If he said he got some recorder it's gonna be some good to put out. He don't be recording no bullshit so it's gonna be some. It's gonna be some. It may been why... Well now he didn't know that he was recorded until LTG came out but I don't know why he just... All of a sudden out the blue just decided to confess to beating his wife in 2019. Cuz he ain't never been locked up for that. You can't find any arrest papers or anything for that. And he just came out and said they holding it over his head but he didn't tell a lot of people that. So who could have been holding over his head? But anyway. That's my take on the live. What'd you say there gay? Random thing to say. Right, it just out the blue wasn't nobody even talking about this shit no more. It was gone and he just said fuck it. It's the do it fluid game it was the do it fluid. Now what perplexed me about it is he blamed it on his mama cuz he said his mama told him never let nobody hit him. And so then he doubled down and said his mama smacked him on the butt when he was a kid and he smacked the shit out of her. Said boy niggas just they just don't know when to stop talking. But this is not beef this is just... This is just me reacting a little bit to some shit I heard. Again, I'm not offended or nutted in about I ordered the fuck money boy trays and when you see me you gon' get it but... You and I both know I'm not coming to Hamilton New Jersey. You're never coming to Memphis so we're not going to cross paths. Which is why I don't know why you jumped out the gate when the shit first happened talking about how you wanted blood and you was coming here to kill me. Cuz just like how you said JJ don't do numbers scream and yell and threaten motherfuckers. You have a long list of people on this bitch too that you've threatened and ain't pulled up on none of them. Ain't got close to pulling up on no nigga. The both of y'all y'all are like twins. Except for one from Philly the other one from Chattanooga. You say he be stunting you did your stunting tonight. One and the same. One and the same neither one of you niggas rich. Both of y'all got regular jobs y'all act stunt like a motherfucker. Man I'm gonna push play fuck it. Trusty Gray Everett?
Yes.
Trusty Carlisle?
No.
Vice Attorney. Yes. Alright, so the motion paid out I mean no bills get paid. My advice to the board is to pay bills. Other than that all the vendors all people you already messed up our credibility. With vendors vendors don't wanna do the work because they say we do not pay them. And as you can see we do not pay them because people get here and pay the fix with your money. They did the work pay the people for the work they done. So we should not be here saying remove anybody. So this special it's strictly for... Would it be the 185? Please stop we are gonna have a business video. So please there's a motion on the floor to pay the bills you don't wanna pay these people credit.
I would like to make a little motion so we do wanna pay bills but I have an amended motion.
Okay. Well I'm not in favor of amended motion you can make the motion please tell me who you wanna say I love you. Go ahead.
There's an amended motion to take out item 199 which is Excel printing. 200 which is Excel printing. I have questions about the toys. Not saying that I don't wanna pay anything for the toys and I do have questions about that. So that's 202 and 216. Gonna take out 223 which is Southland RCM Communications. 224 which is Southland RCM Communication. And that's the... Okay, and so just to be clear so we have a new image ordinance that says that no elected or appointed official can use the township to promote their person. Their slogan, their name, their image or anything. And if they do then they have to pay for those things. And so again we're just trying to make sure that the rules that are put in place are followed. That's it we're not trying to say that anybody can be paid but you have to follow the rules if you wanna be paid. So technically the board township doesn't owe these people any image that has a supervisor's base name she has to pay back according to the end of the contract. So we're not gonna be... Just one rules that need following that's it.
Alright, you're done? No, actually. Point trustee Carmen Carlisle. Cuz yeah we damn sure know any printing bill has something directly to do with your face. Ain't got shit to do with nothing else it's just you. Tell me about the toys. Have the toys been purchased?
Okay, don't.
I'm asking a question.
We should know the answer to this. I don't want that, but you know, you wanna be removed, we really have to be. At the end of that, if y'all make sure y'all get security in here, because we're not gonna do this and that. We're here to vote and move on.
Damn, Tiffany said she finna throw these niggas up out of there. She go, oh, you gotta get the fuck up out of here.
If the make they stated, at the end of the day, you should know what's paid for or what's not.
Well, I'm asking a question, do you have your toys? Are the toys, like, the township? Or do they still need to be delivered? That's a question I have.
You can ask the board. Answer it.
No, I don't know. I have a question. Have the toys been purchased?
Would you believe, we're starting?
Okay, one more time. Yes or no question? So, you know, they're paid for already, or once again, it's based on the proceedings and rolling, talking, we're still talking about toys.
Answer the question.
I'm asking a question, if you have any purchase, I would like, even, even, even without a clearly purchase, the bigger thing is the insurance, we don't have insurance, let me be very clear, after this meeting.
This shit chaotic as hell.
So what if somebody's trying not to pay it, follow along, or they provide a code?
Instead of guy ready to act it. That's why you ain't gonna be the supervisor no more, ma'am, you just, nah. Y'all finna have hell until the election for supervisor. She is gonna talk shit the entire time. This is the behavior, y'all gonna get out this woman, because she knows she can't run no more. So she's gonna be really unpleasant. Now she calling this woman dumb. The woman who can't enunciate most of the English language is calling somebody else dumb. All right, then, hey, B, how you doing? Now, we call for Dalton Security, ma'am. We, we call for Dalton Security.
Okay, you dance right, niggas. Not come to a board meeting and put the township in jeopardy. Don't have insurance, because you two need not come and take care of your own, try all my life, and try to find it. You do not come and vote for like, sure.
What you doing, B Nicole? What, what you doing? I ain't heard your voice in, in a, in a minute. Seeing some ticks. What, what you doing? Hitting my link? If you ain't, uh, well, I know you ain't work, your ass is off. Who you proud of? I ain't did nothing. I haven't done anything. Hey, Melissa. Yeah, Tiffany is, Tiffany working on a well-whooped ass at this point.
Y'all could come and do your job. You have refused to report me and go to have insurance. Therefore, we don't have insurance. But you can vote for, that is the truth, and that you expect now to insurance, or you might have, that emails, help and show you, no danger, that you're doing, you're paying for insurance, you don't have insurance. Because the twin kids were found out, they told me, she got some money, they kept telling me, that's a beast, that's a beast, that is, that is.
How did these damn meetings get so chaotic? They ain't even went to public comment yet, and this is already happening. They could, they asked some damn questions about the toys. And she got an attitude and saying, you sound dumb. Ooh wee. Security, not you, ma'am, not you.
Toys is not important.
It's really not.
What in the ghetto message they doing? In the bed, got schooled in the morning, next to this line, y'all interesting, you ever been in high school, getting a great job, what in the name? I'm just saying, I, I thought they said the outsiders brought all this chaos.
Is your standorte township? That's why.
Damn, she ain't paying her rent. We hearing all the heckling going on.
I have a question. Um, attorney, this question comes to hurt you. Um, I have a question about, um, the items that are in the reputation lottery. Um, I know that's general, um, and I don't understand, does that still apply with the image ordinance? Um, or do they not comply with image ordinance in general?
The people in the audience rude as a motherfucker, I'mma just go and say it. Y'all rude as hell. But everybody just gonna keep talking. Man, I don't even remember dude's name. They ain't paying for your free food boxes. It's a free food box, Tiffany.
Are, what's her, is her name? You don't run, man, on the rock, stop.
Who just put that jacket on and left? Somebody go to the food staff office if you need some free food. No home trainer, the whole meeting out of order, call the roll. This is ghetto. Who just walked off?
All right, again, no more bills paid, next, is there a motion for?
No more bills paid.
Second.
You act like somebody gonna whoop they ass, because you keep announcing the bills ain't being paid. That ain't gonna happen to them. But yeah, no more bills paid. Now what? Who, who gonna do some?
Yes, all right, moving on, next, you have a motion for confirmation of awards. Uh, is that a motion to, 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 to send it out for this department from one group? But first, is that a motion to go send it?
Niggas can't be quiet to say they like. They didn't turn this shit into, uh.
Number two.
Act like they bought tickets to be entertained.
Second.
I have a question.
We gonna do number three, we are removing that one, because we have to do something different. So we doing one, two, and four. We gonna get that, so we want one, one, two, now, just three to prove, so we're looking one, two, and four. Trustee Gonzalez? Trustee Carla? Trustee Gray?
She can't even answer, she can't, and shit. What kind of crazy weird shit is this?
All right, um, so for number three, it is, uh. Okay, so for number three, it was, uh, general fund, general assistant fund, tax debt. Um, reason why I put this one from the general, because we have to, you have to, you cannot let people's tax money, but that tells them how you gonna spend your money. So that's the reason why I remove number three from the general. That's a tax debt, just raise it, just ask it, see? Just raise that to, just put one, two, and four, so just.
So we, we just prove under section seven or eight.
Okay, I just raised, resolution, question, they went through, we're like, what we like to have in the general, so then after that, we prove one, two, and four. And everyone agreed on one, two, and four. Now the last one is number three, which is the tax. That's what I'm, I'm just, from the other general.
So, why, why are the other ones here?
Because this is for our general fund and general assistant fund, the others got nothing to do with it.
It's a difference before you ask a question, I mean, you should, you could, you could do it. No, we have to ask this for, attorney, if you have a question, attorney, if we have a, it's happening without. With the legend, so.
Attorney, already get, uh, we have one, two, three. My daughter don't get it too, my daughter, understand what I'm saying?
This cannot be a real meeting. This is a psy-op, this, this can't be a actual professional meeting.
Everybody's in Japan, good day. My, my attorney, I, I have a question. So I have not had an opportunity to research this exact question, but some very good research, uh, right now, as we're sitting here, tells me that, yes, it is generally advisable to approve budget before you approve a levy. But, but, but I'm concerned, so it's that you have a timeframe in which to approve a levy. If you don't approve a levy, you are violated by the first, for the last Tuesday in December, that you can't run the taxes next year. So that would be my advice, to pass the levy.
So we passed the levy, and what the, uh, and I was trying to say, it's true that it will matter, however, if we pass it, then we're in good shape.
I, I, I wouldn't say necessarily that we're in good shape, because you still gonna.
Correct, I mean, maybe we better.
First, first, specific timeframe, also specific timeframe, which a budget needed to be approved. That obviously, it is. Well, nothing per se, in the law that expresses this that I found. Um, I do see a state, the town, the county, which is the town's officials, and the behind, it says, say, that if this lawyer begins after the levy must be adopted, that the budget preparation order must be adopted for the levies. As a general rule, yes, where budget preparation programs should be adopted for the levies. However, I'm concerned is that if we don't adopt it, now, even if that, that commission prerequisite is required, that you may, the township may be putting it up. Into another bad position, so, especially with the annual levy. But if we can't get both of them, if we pass the levy, so that that actually, it should be a hundred later, and much of it will be a hundred later. Uh, I just got a concern about that. It's the third person having the tax, right? And it's the last Tuesday in summer, which just here is the third person. And you guys are, you guys, stay clear, that is the date that it's filed. I can say, but I have time, I have a special beginning, and I'm still have the budget, but I had the budget on the prior agenda on Tuesday, too fast. But you gotta kick it off, then for the, it may, it may, it's agenda, but the budget was on here, you passed the budget, it was passed the tax letter. Because I'm doing everything the right way, right? I'm trying to, I'm preventing the process. For everybody to be here jumping through loops and hoes and not, that's constantly keeping that in mind.
It was hoosed.
So as you can see, you need to call another meeting, pass the budget.
Y'all no budget on the general, which y'all took out, I had it on the general, right here.
They took it off the agenda. Why y'all, why y'all talking about it?
We are, no budget on here, we took it off the general, so you can't even hold on to that, because it's being funny. And if we pay a budget. Hell, we not on the budget right now, we talking about tax debt, so they wanna y'all try it, they wanna y'all try it. Okay, well, you told me how to pass a budget before we pass the tax letter, and that's not right, after the budget, but you didn't show up. So give me y'all now, at the 15 hour, and y'all doing it wrong. So no, I will not be part of, uh, you passing a tax debt the wrong way, passing the right one, passing the budget. Y'all here all the way from March to pass a budget, March of this year, 2024, we're now talking about the next budget time. That's how bad it is, you guys, just how much they can collect your roots for playing the game, because you can't have a row. No one is taking care of the bills up here, the last two trustees, when they come here and grandstand, and talk about why, uh, we need a tax letter, y'all, and suddenly you got to the third person to make your house.
Sing it, sing it, Gonzalez. Are you talking about the clerk? Are you talking about the clerk? No, no Gonzales, I didn't see it. No Gonzales didn't say call the road, that's not your line, sir, you is out of order, you can't tell her to call the road? This is ghetto as fuck, nothing, the professionalism by all parties are gone, they done made the white lawyer get out of pocket. Call the road. Chris said call the motherfucking road, and he learned his issue. She mad, no. Hey, Leo. Everybody, it's just too much chatter going on.
The item three, what is that except?
Okay, um, that's our insurance coverage, uh, Robert, your coverage is 24, is Robert 24 years old?
No, no, not Robert Moore.
And just to be frank, everybody, all these are our insurance, our, for crime insurance, uh, cyber insurance, things like that, that has nothing to do with property and township, vehicle insurance, this is shipping, those, today is the deadline, this is why I came here, other than I'm not being a villain, um, once we pass this.
Damn, what did she say, y'all ain't talking about shit, that ain't supposed to be here. Fucking are singing? The 185, I'm trying to figure out, I wanna say that something in this live, especially on this particular content creator, whose live amusing, something happened to where later on tonight, Ms. Roberts addressed her on a live stream, and we probably gonna get into that when we done with this, even though I'm so upset, it was a good 10 minutes that passed where it just was nothing being said cuz I didn't let myself onto the damn stage, but on other devices, it typically just automatically adds you to that motherfucker, you have to knock yourself down, so I gotta get adjusted. But yeah, I was talking shit three times for a good 10 minutes. Had to be in the cold sleep, Tamika probably gone to, Gabe probably at the pot shop or the cone or store, getting the lemon squeeze. I told him he was at the cone store getting the lemon squeeze. And two jet skis. Load a dang whoop Indiana ass. Gabe, did you ever ask why you would need two jet skis at the cone store? Welcome back, man, I thought you was gone. I want it, you got it, don't make me have to go in your pocket. I know you strapped, but you cowards like to play hard, knowing that you don't wanna catch a murder charge. See niggas like to be full of that weed and liquor, smell the line in your mind now, you a killer.
First, I just wanna talk about, a couple things were removed from the agenda, which was, or two things, uh, December 17th. One thing I put on agenda was to adopt the budget, the appropriation budget for township and general system. Another thing I placed on agenda was to adopt the general fund, those two items were removed from this agenda. The great thing that I was trying to push for all residents of the township was approval of supervisors 100% property tax refund from all homeowners throughout the township. And I'd rather make a plan that's property tax, that's fine, so I failed to meet to make sure I gave you, uh, some kind of a beat for the topic. So that was on the agenda. Also, approval of allowances for all or township employees, that was on the agenda. And thanks for that, we had on agenda to approve and accept a reservation of Jerry Jones. He's a trustee that quit, uh, while ago, and that's why he kept playing his game, trying to hold down the clock. Where our 60 days, we have never ever accepted a reservation of Jerry Jones. It has to come before this board will approve or accept it, or the clock to start, the clock cannot even start until we settle. So that's another issue, uh, for you. Also, y'all just saw us display, uh, for township. Is it in my heart that we did not agree?
Man, where the fuck was your antennas, it was supposed to, I think, like, some, one of them sectors had like a a Christmas lingerie extravaganza going the fuck on, you didn't know about that, I need to see, I need the link for that too. I gotta get the link for that, I missed it. I heard it was going on, but I ain't seen it. I think it was the Mo 3 sector.
Because now they cannot have a great Christmas because they spend their money first to give us products, and then we supposed to be a person. So we don't reverse on these, they're them, those are the people now. And it's what hurts everybody throughout township that look forward to that move house, I hear, Thanksgiving, we had a brand new, same with the boxes, people's going about everything you needed, you didn't got them to the grocery store, that's how we break that out for them. So that you will not be getting for this Christmas, just the fact that the two trustees on the end, Chris and Carmen, uh, chose not to go to pay for boxes for you to get food, or food for the food package, uh, also the toys, y'all know the toys every single year, you know, when Frankie Correto's here, every year, and it toy everywhere. So why would we not continue that same thing here in the township? We did it last year, it was epic, we had there, it was like Toys R Us, you just walk in and you pick out the toys you wanted. Each kid got three to four toys, it was really dope, y'all, people were cool for that, that was signed up, they really heard about it, so I've been in office all day, and I'm like, it's I can give a toy back tomorrow, I'll give it up Christmas box tomorrow, it might be for today, so they heard it. They're not gonna be getting those items tomorrow. Um, last but not least, we're gonna schedule a special meeting, uh, so if we can't pass a budget, we're gonna pass that before it's used out, and of course, we wanna do it the right way. We are supposed to always pass a budget, or we went the entire year without passing a budget, people say, come on, trip, the entire year, so this is why we appear at this.
Oh, the mic was off, I said, I forget you acting brand new and you can't watch the live stream.
And it's to pass a budget and then.
I like a nasty nasty.
That's all we're trying to do, so pay attention, guys, because I'm not people uh, tricked me because I don't care, and you're not reading your organization. Educate yourself first before you just go off of, uh, next. Appointments, I mean, you clear about appointments, how they put out this commission. Appointment works just like this, all you guys know, you get appointed, you saw Carmen get appointed, the appointment is not sole person of one individual or community board, it's for everybody. Everybody on this board gets to pick and choose who they want, they either gonna get a motion, or get a second, or they don't get no motion, or don't get no second, or don't get no votes, that's how this game go. As you know, a lot of people got their name drawn, it's like, it could get accepted, let alone get the votes to become to the ballot, or to become the trustee. So that's how that game goes, not, uh, he's trying to prevent super bowl hand from appointing, I can only suggest someone, just like everybody up here can suggest someone, but you gotta accept it's gotta be votes to make that person a trustee, just so we got the truth, uh, how would you appoint somebody, uh, way to do that? So what they're telling you, it's so misleading, and it's all fucked, if y'all make a deal. Um, my name is C K, the the who, uh, trustee, uh, Carmen Carla there, she's a liar, and I'm also lying.
This is what her leadership reads. This is a damn shame. And shout out to Carmen for saying, look, bitch, you not gonna keep fucking up my last name, that's not my last name. You can call me a liar, but don't fuck my last name up.
They did not show up to the board, the man who talked about it, said, oh, you should have, and you not, and show up to the actual hearing, too, that's what's saying, that's how you get that, before that. So a lot of things out, so hopefully, you can't touch your nerves, I said, you can yell, say whatever you want, no, I, all I want you to know is the facts, the truth, and the other side. Listen to the line in the liberal, and the board cannot move anything but keep to other people. Uh, Carmen Carla, I said, uh, question about your lawyer, or those are the fucking haters behind all this, this board, and this township, this township, the right, now, certain, I said, if I showed it, I would be in a high book, everything showed, certain, in the protection. My kids shop on everything to look better, be better, and it's not it. When I came over there, I turned to the ranch, and I had $4.6 million.
Whoever that was, I didn't forgive this busy shit for an old lady, she's big though.
Alright, so I just wanted to, um, thank you, trustee, for holding out, or saying, for the, thank you, from the bottom of our hearts. Uh, when it comes to, um, this election, I'm so glad that she not even own about it, so we don't have to worry about dealing with her past. So, um, you know, it's, it's something weird, when she just said, I'm a great student, and think that she's just hilarious, and great to you guys. But again, nobody can say anything against her, that's the problem with a dictatorship. She said that she ain't dictator.
Hello, Sonia.
So that she's a major dictator. Um, y'all gotta make sure that, because she's not a dictator, that y'all don't vote the other dictator, because, believe it or not, she hasn't passed Christopher Clark. And believe it or not, Christopher Clark is running for supervisor, Mr. Paul St. Louis, so you guys gotta understand that we have to make sure that we vote corruption, particularly out of the township, the insurance, for her being uninsuranceable, that's ridiculous. You wanna sit up here and ride and say that it's their fault that you don't have insurance, though, it's your fault that you don't have insurance. And also, when it comes to the tours, I am sure that anyone that don't have tours, you all have a talent that's been out as long as you tour, so don't just always have to remind us of the talent because that is what we call a public aid office anyway. However, you can call 211, you can go to churches, it's a necessity that you call one, you can't, it does not need to be the township all the time, so definitely the township is at war. So until they get a new supervisor in place and actually qualify, then be careful about trying to pass a budget when all you're trying to do is the last thing after the state.
And I, I just moved in to township, and I haven't been here for seven months. For seven months that I've been here, it's been war, just war, I moved from the city. I moved from the city thinking that I was gonna find a better.
Did you hear that motherfucker say you shouldn't have came here? Now... Now, the motherfucker in there, in there that said you shouldn't have came here, they got some complaints going on, if they on Tiffany's side, they got some complaints with what the people up there got going on, and vice versa. Motherfucker, you shouldn't have brought your ass there, you at the meeting just like her, your ass live in the township just like her. Maybe you shouldn't have a complaint either. Niggas is out of order at the meeting.
And I know everybody has their own, whatever. I, I just believe that some of the things from Dalton is feeling over now into the township. And, 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 and another thing is, I'm thinking about those seniors that has to go to dialysis. And they get their check at the beginning of the month. So they didn't plan for the beginning of the month. How do they get to their appointment? You know, they just roll things up like this at the last minute. Toys, fine, you get a, a option. But when you talk about seniors in there, like people that are gonna be hungry, you have to think about things like this. And yes, you just throw things out. But I can say, maybe that's man win. But we gotta come in with resolution. We can't just keep fighting. Let's come up some type of resolution and let's think about our seniors. That, that, that's where my argument. Let's think about our seniors and who is a trustee, and let's have a marriage.
Fuck them old people. Dalton got a lot of big booty women. I mean, the township, but all these, all these people is from Dalton.
Which is way more important than this. She had to get in one Friday at one o'clock in the afternoon. She was hoping that no one would show up for that meeting. So that's that part. But first, sit here and talk about what Eric told me, she did the exact same thing. It's the face of constitution hypocrisy. It's polite. Okay? You love to call my partner out for her, her integrity, professionalism, you know, she's staying, she's getting it back.
Hey, my white friend, how you doing? Hey goddess.
Who wants to show up to this environment, Tiffany? You bring chaos. Somebody said, you know, you love people so much, why don't you step aside? Step down, look at us, even when we're talking to you, let people, and they know we're good. Why don't you look at us, acknowledge us? I'm just saying, it doesn't matter how to still stay around, stay. Um, crucial, but ladies just spoke, just to let you know, there is a program, you can stay, if they are not, not careful or not paid, they can call, they can arrange rides to any kind of.
And they come with insurance too. I need this thing though. That's right.
There is, uh, rides available for people, you don't even have to be senior, you can pay or you can care, you can get rides. Tiffany, um, you know, talk about, you know, insurance, you know, the thing yesterday at the Melanie Fitness Center, was that place insured? Okay, I just need to know, was it insured? How could the residents get there? Was the man on the shirt vehicles? Because they were sure riding around town yesterday. There were several times, third time, vehicles on the streets. They had shirts, not, they were on the streets. Um. You know, also, you know what, Tiffany, now I hate to do this, I hate to call you out, but you are a liar. You're proven over and over and over again. You talk about things that you turn around and do, and you basically justify what you're doing. Also, when you go around the time, why are you trying to take our vote away, Tiffany? The same thing that you're advocating for, but because of the pockets and the reason why you're nonvalid? You're, you're, that same way to feel like those voters are stripped of their rights, you're doing the exact same thing. And now allowing the people to vote, and that's trustee. That's an awesome decision, that's right.
You are a very expensive.
We have waited sixty days, and now, now.
What's your zippo? What's your zippo?
She do four one night. She do live. She do live.
You don't even get in the township. Okay, you're, you're not.
That building ain't even got that many people in it and they making all that damn noise. Niggas is rude. But damn. It's ghetto up in there.
You can come over here and rope her, she can rope her, not herself, damn. You don't have any return.
Did she count security? There go Thunder Dan again. I don't know why we can't never hear Dan. He got the deepest voice in the Southland and we can't never hear him.
Not gonna make it, baby. You ain't gonna make it. She's not gonna make it. She's not gonna make it and none of y'all don't, y'all not, y'all not. That's right. I don't have to beg you, I'm retiring. Looking for a job.
I wanna educate. Tiffany, she always says she wanna educate the residents, so.
Hey Valerie Stubbs.
The lessons learned you made yesterday at Melanie Fitness Center, for the whole, all these stations, having bingo. First of all, you should have had amusement license from the village with consent of the board and hold that event. Also, trustees, I wanna ask, because it also was a bus there. Transporting residents, if you didn't have any insurance, were those buses insured yesterday? Evening at six o'clock? Well, that's own issues, let, uh, Tiffany in.
Yep.
Okay? And at the caucus, you had six buses out there transporting residents. That was illegal. Let me educate.
She legal, as she was saying.
You cannot transport residents on a bus to a caucus, to an event such as that. That's illegal. Let her know what time you're gonna sit over there. Let her know that that's illegal. Please do, because she need to be educated, that that's illegal to do. I also, I wanna know approximately why she's sitting up here telling the residents that the trustees up here will not vote on giving you a tax rebate. If you think about it, the last one we received was probably.
Valerie said, let me talk to you.
You're going down here. Two million dollars that you wanted to source, on seventeen. Mister Calhoun, think about, think about residents, how much would you receive? That she's sweating them to hold on, to make it look like she's doing. Something about residents, and you only receive fifteen dollars. If you need fifteen dollars, call me ahead.
This shit is better than love in hip hop. I like Tiffany's sweater. She definitely a Tiffany plant. How much Tiffany pay you to say that? Fuck them old people. It's the sw- it's natural selection. Survival of the fittest. Old folk gotta get how they live. It's a young folk game. Hey First Lady, are you gonna agree with, to fuck them old people? They gotta get it out the mud. Tiffany going out, say it. You gotta tell me why Ms. Roberts went off on Dingleberry. My name been trending the past two days. Fuck them old folk. I love them, but fuck them old folk. I didn't see your comment, E Brooks. What the hell? It look like they doing some suspicious. The fuck are they doing? I be nervous. Hey Queen Two sided. The rest of us over on Money Boy Trey. You were ready to go that seat. See, I be, I be at the loop in Dalton politics. I try to go to Dalton politics once a month and then I go in trolling stupid comments. And I gave up on going through their journeys. That motherfucker is twenty-four seven drama. Don't get time for it. It definitely was a shit show. Who is it? The Black Panthers? What the fuck is going on? Why is all the people standing at the podium? Who's security is there? No, no damage. Y'all gonna tell me why this big brother is standing next to the podium like he armed security? Who the fuck is this? The fruit of the nation looking ass. Who is this nigga? Some of, so y'all just gonna ignore me. Ain't nobody gonna tell me who this nigga is. Don't nobody in the township know. Who is this nigga? Well, this nigga is from Wakanda. Now, we is, I'm not pushing play, attacking an answer, damn it. Who the fuck is this nigga? Jed, where are you? Jed, do you know who this nigga is? Jed. Jed, where, where is Jed? Do he know? Somebody gotta know who this is. Come on, man. Come on, man. Somebody, anybody? So he got that big from lifting food boxes? This nigga should have played football. He could have made a lineman, a linebacker, a defensive tackle, a left end. He steady like, I wish a nigga would run away while my folk talking. Nigga, you could be a, a bodyguard for the stars, nigga. You just, you could pick it, you could like, whichever celebrity you want to work for, nigga, just send them your picture. Like, let me be your security. This crazy world. Cause she take care of her family and friends. I ain't mad about that. That's how the other people get here. He work at the food pantry there. Lifting food boxes got him this far. Boo hoo. Y'all giving out old food in a damn way. You got security next to you. The fuck? This nigga needs to be at WWE. They will give him a job based on his size alone. This nigga world champ in three years. Brother Strong looking at it. Brother Strong looking at it. Man, he's a huge kid. I bet he play football, if there's somebody grandson, like, he still a teen, I bet that nigga play football. Say it, old lady, cause they going crazy, this is crazy work. Oh hell nah, motherfucker. Oh hell nah, old lady, that's where you got us fucked up. I am not at that meeting telling all that shit. It ain't nobody that done came up that said they from outside to the forever, cause the people be proud when they coming from town and say where the fuck they from. That is all y'all which are dysfunctional ass, and apparently y'all been dysfunctional for a long fucking time. Frank just had more control of the dysfunction. No motherfucking outsiders. Which outsider is up there? Cause I said, everybody up there, Chris, Carmen, all of them was unprofessional as fuck at some point during this damn meeting. They not outsiders, motherfucker. Them thirty people or twenty-five people that's sitting there, they not outsider, how the fuck you gonna say is outsiders? That we seen Valerie, we seen Ms. Vivian, we seen Dan the Man, these people we always see at this motherfucker, there ain't no outsiders. In the news. I'm trying to blame somebody for y'all being ghetto as fuck on the national stage. There ain't nobody fluent in it, motherfucking, shut up, old lady. See, that's why, that's why people say fuck them old people. Tuck y'all old ass up. Ooh, go to bed granny. Girl, ooh, not your mama, not your mama, see, all folk don't give a fuck. Not, not to your, not, not to the old lady, went to your mama. None of them people in there getting on your ass are outsider ma'am, none of them. It good nuts. Even Tiffany said, hold up, when that lady said. I don't know where her mama is, even Tiffany said it. Yes, I got to get old, can't handle the truth, and I expect folks to say fuck my old ass. It's the, it's the right passage. Uh-oh. Damn. Damn Tiffany. Also, my last shady comment towards the live that happened tonight. You cannot in one breath say, "I'm doing manly shit, doing real nigga shit," followed up by, "I'm clocking yo' tea." That is not manly at all, gay men say that shit, gay man created it. And black women, that's who say clocking your tea. Gay man, black woman. I'm gonna push play now. Don't be laughing at me, can't handle the truth. This worse than a Apollo crowd. Where's the sandman? Okay, I'm walking off people, I'll be back.
At the end of the day, no matter how you feel about the supervisor, whether you like her or don't like her, it's okay, because what you're hurting by not allowing people to receive their services that they paid for with their tax dollars? Which is thousands of people, cause I've seen them. I'm not telling you from what I heard, I'm saying from what I've seen, I've seen thousands of people showing up and begging and glad to receive the services that the township offers. They do. This is a rare jewel. As a resident, I am very proud of Kristen Dallas and Carmen Gada for taking a stand to defend what is right on the long term for us as Thornton Township residents. I'm very proud of you. My second point is that a replacement trustee is voted in for the township leading in on as residents. It should not be something where the supervisor resides the majority. That should be the decision of the residents of Thornton Township. And my third point is, Ms. Tiffany, I have known you for ten years. I met you when Riley Rogers was choosing your trustee, the village of Golden. At that point, I wished he would have chosen a beer beer trustee. I mean, it's how different we're men, I think he would have chosen a real beer beer like myself. Ms. Tiffany, I am a mature person, I've watched you for ten years, my young lady. I am asking that you would resign as supervisor of Thornton Township, I've known you for ten years, and that you would resign as the mayor of the village of Golden. This would be for the betterment of all of us. This is my end of speech, if I have. Please resign. This is those two us, this is not that shit. See, my thing about partnership, y'all lay your deck, y'all play the next little deck. You're messing around with a hundred ninety thousand people and you're sitting here today looking at your trickle down, in every shape, in every form. It has affected everyone, everything, everybody, and every part of every one of these girls, this out here. Look, this ain't been about my money, y'all, I don't care, I don't need to sit down, I don't need to sit down, it ain't never, ever been about you all, does anybody gonna take a thing? I'm telling you, but I had to take over the township last week, I don't have a lot. But I ain't sure y'all, they were giving the shit. I don't care how y'all get it done, y'all need to get that building back over, that's not a month, y'all, that's not a year, that's not a month, that's not a year. And I'm so mad with Tiffany, so much going on, that was one time, nobody know me, what about? What about one time, nobody know nobody in this room? But when it comes to one of these, I have seen some of you, that's a bitch. I have seen you all sit up there and test something, you got no luck, y'all don't business, that's the deal. I have seen people treat people in a manner that you wouldn't want to be treated. And you suddenly want everybody coming to your house treating you like that, and they just stand here and talk for, and make your whole black dog go, damn, wish they had been looking. You don't know how to apologize, you want somebody to bow down, y'all don't validate none of nobody else's life.
Let her cook. Let her cook. Let her cook. Has trainer's time started or not? Has trainer's time started? He said, I don't need you to remind me, that's my grandbaby. They finna jet. Oh shit, they finna fight. I thought they had to be related for nothing. Oh shit, what the hell is going on? She, what the hell, oh shit. Who is this K B? She don't, she don't need a microphone, oh shit. They running, oh shit, they running. She just ran the truck, oh shit, she gotta go later, god damn. Wait a goddamn minute, man. Wait a goddamn minute. Wait a goddamn minute. Now this bitch get in there with a golf club. If all the people have to go through metal detectors, and the trustees have once stated that they have security concerns and threats on their life and shit. How is an individual able to then walk up in the meeting with a golf club, walk up to the podium with the golf club, then get to yeah and point the golf club at motherfuckers? And nobody said anything to this woman, nobody tried to get the golf club out her hand, or nothing. What the fuck is going on in the Thornton Township? Ah, this is crazy. This lady got a nine iron in it, bitch. Who she think she is, Tiger Woods? Does Dalton have a golf course? Cause if Dalton ain't got no golf course, why the fuck she got golf clubs? When she ain't got clubs, she got one, that's probably the only one she get, but what the fuck? It was, so nobody said anything to this woman when she walked in with a golf club? Did nobody say, hey, you gotta take that back to the car, or nothing? So I know it's somebody in there with their pistol, if she got in there with a golf club, which you could visibly see, somebody got their pistol in their waistline and in their purse, guaranteed. This is nuts. She done made the trustees leave, y'all see Carmen and dude get they ran the fuck up. They were like, oh shit, no, she is pointing the golf club, we gotta go. If she was never charged and she retired, what are we talking about here? I'mma, I'mma just say that again. If she was never charged and she retired, what the fuck are we talking about here? Cause she's alleging this happened while she was still working. Now, unless there are some articles saying disgraced officer Mary Avant, A B C D E F G. She's just talking about investigations and allegations, which couldn't have been founded if she retired. And didn't get charged and go to jail, cause I'm pretty sure there would have been a black eye on the Chicago Police Department. One of their officers was selling dope in their spare time, that they would have charged her, pretty sure of it. What I'm saying, what we talking about here? Let's see what Jed's investigation. Let's see what J's investigation uncovers. He said, "She say, 'Motherfucker,' like now or another." We gotta wait. They got security. Wait, they got, that ain't security. It's niggas with shit on that actually say police. And this woman was allowed to walk in that bitch with a golf club? That's not a weapon? That, that's not a weapon. We know you can bash a head in with the golf club. I'm just saying. How many men, black men in there? Do y'all think would have been allowed in that building with that damn golf club? Ooh, her shake bad. She said like the Penguin. All who walk on the park. Hey, you know her?
Um, this, Ms. Roberts, Ms. Roberts. You watching I said something about the model?
I thought I heard you say that. You know what? You come and do that.
You know, why do you post and you know that group's a hussy? And you posting that group and then you send people to hate on me? And I didn't say that.
Okay, so that post was not for you. It was a legendary issue because you were the one who stained that line, right? That post was intentional for all the young women and old.
Oh, she tried to check her on the live stream where she had thousands of people watching. Oh. Okay, then. Now I see why Ms. Roberts said cold, motherfucking red. Okay? She was like, "Yo, email me." Uh-uh. She, she, when she said email, oh. She pulled a Dingleberry remote. That's what Dingleberry would do.
Yeah, because when you do that. But if you mention my name, and they, can you understand where I'm coming from?
Look, I'm telling you, man. If you get jammed up, don't mention my name.
You focused on me and my husband specifically and saying that we were being kept out of the meetings because of something that we did. I was hurt by that because we reached out to you.
That was something that you, you think that you were kicked out of the meeting?
You said it was something that you...
You were kicked out the meeting and I got covered when...
We weren't kicked out. We were never kicked out.
When we were in Dalton, you weren't put out?
No.
Oh, because I have the coverage. And maybe I'm mistaken because you had to go to Lansing Police Department and all that stuff?
I was never kicked out.
You just voluntarily left?
Yes, because I was threatened.
Okay.
The Marcus threatened her.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify because I saw that you said, I said something about Kamal.
Listen, what you need to understand, that is behind it, that we are not those type of people.
You can talk to us.
Yeah.
No, you can talk to me too. Like, it's like a lot of people.
We tried and you never responded to that.
I responded because the last email, yeah, I did respond. Yeah. So that's it. Because if you're posting about me in Dalton politics, you know, I've seen you post over there.
Dalton and Thornton Township so messy. So she made, that she posted in Dalton Politics, responded to something that she said. So Dingleberry did a video or said something in a video first. Ms. Roberts, she don't got no YouTube channel or nothing like this. So she went to Dalton Politics and sanded off. And Dingleberry said, "Why you post over there and you know they don't like me? Ma'am, why did you go live and talk shit about me knowing people don't like me? It's just the whole, throw the whole township away."
That's what I'm doing. So if you felt like I said that, you could have emailed me too.
So I need you to go back and reread the post because there's nothing negative said about you. Yes, your initials on there. But there's nothing negative said about you because I would never say anything negative about anybody. Okay, but if you want me to take your initials out, I'll be happy to do that. I understand where you come from. But just know that I would never say anything negative about you or anyone else.
Okay, and happy holidays.
Happy holidays, my ass. Happy holidays, my ass. All right, hold on. Let me, let me pull up the clapback. Give me a second. We gonna clap back. We gonna clap back. Jeez, boy, it got spicy up in there. Here's Tiffany. We know that, there was footage of Tiffany walking right past the woman with the golf club and she's supposed to be in fear of her life. Oh, man. Hey, I think. Let me get this speed up. We already on 1.25. Back to StreamYards. Present. Oh, no, where did it go? I think it'd be running up on senior cities. She, she, she didn't did this. She didn't done this before. She had a pattern of doing this. And what she do? Oh, no.
Oh, good to be with you all tonight. Yes, I had to call my Kimmy. I called a Kimmy. I probably am the only one that calls her that. She is my Kimmy. And I had to tell her there was something that was bothering for me that happened on today. And, um, I was going to address it one way, but I'm like, no, I need to address it on a platform since this person lied on her platform. So, um, it's gonna get started and we're gonna end it today. And this is going to be the only time I'm going to talk about this. The only time. And I hope that we could, um, one thing I do not do, if anybody knows me, I don't play. I do not lie.
Sunday.
I tell people what I think, how I feel.
I hate it when human beings say they don't lie. That's a lie within itself. You try not to lie. You lie. Everybody does.
I have an issue with anybody. I am that person that would go to the person themselves and try to get something straight. So, um, that's why I'm here. That's why I'm here.
I'm tuning up now. Almost there. Give me one second.
Okay.
Yeah, so when the boss calls, I, I just have to... Okay, I don't know if y'all gonna be able to hear it over the screaming resident, but I hear it now. So give me a second. Okay, let me get ready to share. Oh, let me see. Hold on. Let me, let me see if some more family came in. Let's see. Good evening, Amy. How are you? She Marie. I, Javah. Y'all keep the peace in these comments. Uh, we are on with Jennifer Roberts. She called the L in the Q bat line, uh, that the residents have straight contact with me for because this is the residence platform right here. Um, and she asked, because she come on the platform to address something. And I told her, "Absolutely. What time you want to go, boss?" And she said, uh, you know, "Just let me know when you ready." And so I ran a few errands and here we are. And I'm gonna play a little bit of it. Hey, JMC, I'm gonna play, uh, a little bit of what we hear. Okay, yes. Hey, Sherri. Sherri, I'm glad Sherri here. This, this, this is, this is the, um, the chief moderator. Okay, Sherri, gotta get your beanie because we about to, we about to run up into something. Anthony Hood, what's up? All right, so I'm gonna play this and then, uh, the boss will give y'all, uh, the background.
Yeah. Oh, this, Ms. Roberts, Ms. Roberts.
Yeah, I would think she had a microphone.
You know, why do you post and you know that group's a hussy? And you posting that group and then you send people to hate on me? And I didn't say that.
Okay, so that post was not for you. A legendary issue because you were the one who stained that line, right? That post was intentional for all the young women and old who are single. I was thinking of a particular one. Not Facebook.
You know how the internet works.
I do understand because there was a screen on my, that you did. You focused on me and my husband specifically and saying that we were being kept out of the meetings because of something that we did. I was hurt by that because we reached out to you.
That was something that you did that you were kicked out of the meeting?
You said it was something that you...
You were kicked out the meeting and I got that coverage?
We weren't kicked out. We were never kicked out.
When we were in Dalton, you weren't put out?
No.
Oh, because I have the coverage. And maybe I'm mistaken because you had to go to Lansing Police Department and all that stuff?
I was never kicked out.
You just voluntarily left?
Yes, because I was threatened.
Okay.
The Marcus threatened her.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify because I saw that you said, I said something about Kamal.
Listen, what you need to understand, that is behind it, that we are not those type of people.
You can talk to us.
Yeah.
No, you can talk to me too. Like, it's like a lot of people.
We tried and you never responded to that.
I responded because the last email, yeah, I did respond. Yeah. So that's it. Because if you're posting about me in the Dalton politics, you never see me post over there. I never say anything about anybody over there. I'm on my platform, doing my thing. So if you felt like I said that, you could have emailed me too.
Because there's nothing negative said about you. Yes, your initials on there. But there's nothing negative said about you because I would never say anything negative about anybody.
Okay.
Don't dealing, motherfucker.
I'll be happy to do that. I understand where you come from. But just know that I would never say anything negative about you or anyone else.
Okay, and happy holidays.
You want me to talk about it?
Hold on one second. Let me, let me get through the rest of these. Some more people coming in the room.
Okay.
Hey, Suzie Q, how you doing? Enrique Amunaz, we about to get into what happened. Um, let's see. Ja Boogie, what's up? Toy, what's going on? Paul is in the building. Carla, hey, Carla. Fred from Poland. Yes, I also heard that. She said she had a gun also. They talking about training. Succeeding, what it do? Shadow Sika. Hey, Mac, what's going on? Okay, we having family meeting tonight. You supposed to have on your black shirt and your beanie to the side, to the side.
Would it be a shock if she had a gun?
Loud and wrong. Loud and wrong. And this is what I tried to tell you all about the narrative that was being spun about me and Sherri at the team. You all can watch whoever you want. I feel like, watch whoever you want. Watch a little bit of this person. Watch a little bit of that person. Do whatever. Support whoever you want to. Just be careful who you take in. Want to. Careful who you take in. Because some of them be loud and wrong and just want to push their own narrative because they're upset with somebody. Okay, they're upset with somebody and they're just pushing their own narrative. So, so support whoever you want. Be careful who you take in. All right, share with those who need to know. Go, Ms. Roberts.
Okay, so you all heard the conversation between Burgundy Blue and I. And I thought that after she came to me, that we had an understanding. Apparently, that is not the case. So let me tell you a little something about me. I am someone who likes to give people the benefit of the doubt. I don't go on what others tell me. I like to read the book for myself. And then determine how to treat someone from there. So, you know, I decided that I will give this young woman the benefit of the doubt. Uh, what changed my mind is I say a lot of ways about her first is the fact that she was trying to victim, um, and some things. And then the way that she treated Sherri. Sherri is my girl. I love her. Uh, so, and I love Kimmy. I love, y'all know. The thing is, is when you try to paint yourself out to be a victim, but don't see your role in things, that's where I have a problem at with you. So in this conversation, uh, it was all about...
I seen her do it.
Posted in Dalton group. Now, I'm sure most of you
Don't dealing, motherfucker.
Have seen the livestream that Burgundy Blue did, um, concerning Tiffany.
I need to cut that out. This is a drop.
Where there was only about 20 people there. Well, after, you know, the little meeting or whatever it is, the gathering that they had, Burgundy Blue was the only YouTuber there to do a livestream. So of course, um, I'm gonna look at it just like everybody else, but I want to know what's going on. While she was outside, uh, she was saying hi to everybody that was coming through the door. Kamal comes through the door. As Kamal comes through the door, she says, "That man said he will go broke for his woman. I want a man like that that will go broke for me." Now, I thought she said that. Her voice was the only one that I heard. I can't hear nobody else's. If you all are typing here, right, I can't hear keyboards. I can't hear nothing like that, though. Um, I posted a post in the group and I put her initials in there. Had no malicious intent at all. I don't know anything about Dalton group, uh, coming for her. That was not my intention. So let me just squash that lie that she made on her lie today. Saying that I sent people out for her. I'm almost 60 years old. I don't play games like that with nobody's lives because I wouldn't want anyone playing games with my children's life like that. But I simply made a post with, uh, the pictures of Tiffany and her married boyfriend on there. And it was basically encouraging all the women who are single, young and old to wait on God to send them a man. Not a married, uh, woman's man. Not someone that's, you know, uh, that's going through a divorce and yet not, you know, it's not divorced yet. Not someone who doesn't take care of his own children, but is walking around rocking somebody else's child on their, uh, hip. Not somebody like that. So I, I call that a beautiful, not even a beautiful, but I call that a horrible, a horror love story. It's a tragic love story. It's not even a Bonnie and Clyde love story. At least I got... Got some kind of feelings when I... I watched that movie, but I don't get anything but, uh, malice, but, uh, 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 like sadness when I see this story. For the child. Then how she comes to me.
Oh, no. It's been no sound for a minute then, son of a bitch. I was asking Ms. Roberts if she didn't have any ill intent. Y'all couldn't hear me, but the bad pause. I said, "If she didn't have any ill intent, why did she..." She heard something that she thought Burgundy said. And in turn, she went and made a post. And I had said, "Had she done the post?" That would, the post was, this was a nice post. It was chock full of wisdom and all that good stuff. But she tagged the woman. So you thought you heard her say something. You go to Facebook and make a post and then you put her initials. You ain't tagging, my bad. You put her initials in there. What was your intent again? Because the post could have just been the post without her being, well, I keep saying tag, but you putting her initials in it. I'm just saying, the post was great. But the post was inspired by something you thought you heard her say. And then you put her initials in it because you thought you heard her say something. All right.
Uh, today after the board meeting, after I spoke to her, she said, "Ms. Roberts, may I speak to you?" I said, "Sure."
I still don't like Dingleberry.
Nicely as I possibly can.
But I'm gonna be fair.
Um, I have a question. I said, "Okay, why would you post my name in the, uh, in that post in the group, knowing that people don't like me?" First of all, I...
Pause right there. Pause right there for one second. You said... She said, "Why would you post my name on the post?" Now, people, I pause right here so that I can give you a PSA. Let me get my voiceover. Let me get my voice over voice on. The PSA is, reading is fundamental. You saw your name mentioned, but you did not read the post. Then you got on your platform to speak loudly and wrongly. See, now we have to start reading as a people. We need to start taking stuff in to understand instead of taking stuff in to respond.
Yes.
Because everybody is not attacking
Keep giving, still going at it.
Is not about you. Okay, I'm sorry. That was a PSA from your super producer. Welcome to everyone has to the room. Attire for tonight is all black with a beanie tilted to the side because we absolutely getting ready to get into the mud. Let's go.
Yes, I forgot to put my my, uh,
Hair girl.
Hey, bro. I'm getting what to do.
That, we, because I'm
But anyhow, as the conversation went on and I explained to her, this was, this post was not about you. I tried to tell this woman that, but she went on to make a big deal about it. So, you know, after, and I even told her, I said, you know, if it makes you feel better, you will re-listen to the, uh, audio, I'll take your initials out of it. I said, I will read and take your initials. I explained to her what my intent was. Apparently, that's not good for her because she was and say that, um, I lied on her and that I put her, uh, I intentionally put her name in the group because people don't like her. Why I have nothing to do that? I'm not your bodyguard. I'm not trying, I'm not, I'm not trying to fight your battles for you, this, that, and the other. But also in that same audio, I asked her, I said, you you painted your, I mean, you did a livestream and you clearly made sure you put my husband and my picture up on that screen and lied and said that we were banned from the board. That was a straight up lie. You all can hear her say, you all weren't banned from, I thought you all were kicked out of the Dalton Board meeting. We, let me set this right now. Burgundy Blue, I do hope you come on. Because I want you to stop all this lying. I want you to stop acting like you are a victim. You are a victimizer. You need to stand up and be a woman for real because any real woman would not seek attention in this manner, okay? And I need you to stop that because you say you have a child and you have a man child and that man child is looking at you. And apparently, if this is what he has to bring him up, then you need to see and as God said, you're a real man in your life. Like, so that you can raise women, but not
I ain't the smartest person in the world, Ms. Roberts, and I don't like Dingleberry at all. But what you just said about a raising a, a man child, I'm guessing she got a son and all of that. And then you thinking she said she wanted a man like Kamal that, uh, go broke for his gal. I, I, I think that's the reason you made the post. Because there, there couldn't have been any good intent out of it because you, you heard it somewhere else. You brought it somewhere else. You were really pointed and pointed with your comments. And you hit a name up. That is crazy work. This is Dalton.
Do or behave the way that you do just to get a man. And I'm gonna tell you right now, if this is how you're behaving, any man that do come into your life is gonna run away from you. Now, you can go right to hell that. And anybody else you want to, uh, back you up, go right ahead and I will repeat what I said. And right now, I am totally pissed off at you as a woman, as a mother, as a wife, and as a grandmother. I'm pissed off at you because you're not being a real woman. A real woman would not do what you did, period. So what you, you did, you decided to go on your lie so that you can spend a narrative and have your parents think that I made
Again, it's fuck Dingleberry because she, and she did the most out here towards me on here YouTube. And I was just being fair. But she responded to you. You took what you thought she said and made a post about it and put her name in it. I would be upset too. Now, the other issue about y'all being kicked out of some stuff, I, I, I did, uh, all of this shit is petty if we just being honest. All of it is petty. Her being, you, you hearing it, thinking it was her daughter that's petty. Her hearing about it in the damn, somebody telling her about it since she said she don't be over there. And her getting upset about it is petty. Her doing the live is petty. Her addressing you on her live is petty. It's all petty. But she can't be mad at her reaction because had you not made the post, I don't think we would be here. Would we? But let's take out the time line wrong. Maybe I got it. Oh, no.
Made up a story concerning you. You're not important to me. You're not. I treated you with respect as I do with anybody else in my life and around me. I have never disrespected anybody nor would I ever disrespect anyone. But when you lie on me intentionally, I have to set the story straight. Because you will not paint me in a narrative for your friends, for your people, for Tiffany and company, for Demarcus Krigley, for Keith Price, for Michael Smith. You are hanging that little company that you want to be. Go ahead. That's your business. But do not paint me in a narrative as if I will lie on you because I never will. I never will. You said that I could reach out to you. Why would I reach out to you? I said nothing to you. I don't have any questions for you. There's nothing you can give me. There's nothing you can do for me. So I'm letting everybody know right now, my husband and I
I ain't playing devil's advocate. I'm playing referee. I'm calling it down the middle. I'm just calling it down the middle.
Have never been barred from any board meetings, period. Period. Yes. Yes. Here is the thing. If you're watching Burgundy Blue, you need to report the facts and get them straight. What I had to do was go to court on one of your people, Demarcus Krigley, who threatened to slap me. I went to, uh, 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 the jailhouse, uh, Holland to bring charges against him and not the other way around. Get the story straight before you start lying on your lies straight. So now
Oh, she's, she hitting them hands together.
Now, anything that comes out of your mouth after that, I hope that everybody knows that you are a liar and the truth ain't in you. And I pray, pray for things to go however in your life. I don't, I wish you well, but this is the end of this conversation with me for you. And yes, she is pretty neutral in the beginning because that's how she wants you to see her. That's how I, you know, I met her. I met her. She was supposed to, she acting like this little quiet mouth. This, this, this so sweet talking type of girl that would bring you into her space. But then I realized that this is someone who sneaks up into your, your little space, your little corner, only to get something from you and then go spend a narrative your whole way. That's not a good thing. And it's not a good thing. It's not a good way to be. So I'm letting it be known tonight. I'm letting it be known tonight. If you're on here, if you got some people that is watching for you, Burgundy Blue, you are a liar. And the truth ain't in you. And I pray for you. I pray for your soul.
All right, now listen, fam.
Let her cook.
Let me, let me say something. It is my mission. It is, it is my mission, I feel like, to, what I try to do is keep the peace on YouTube and bring the YouTubers together.
Um, are they done roasting Dingleberry? I had just heard about it and I skipped forward to where they started talking. I don't know where it ends, but somebody there. Is there more to the Dingleberry roast or is this it? I'm done all speaking once now. Dope dealing motherfucker. Nothing, no. Yeah, I'm waiting on y'all to answer me. So I won't just be sitting through. It's okay. It's okay. So, so keep playing it first lady brown.
The ones that I will work with. Or, or that want to work with me. I'll put it that way. But as YouTubers or content creators, I would say content creators, because I'm trying to be a journalist on the journalistic side of YouTube, right? I try to get the facts right. I bring you the guys the truth. I try to go to the source and, and get whatever I need, um, to give you guys an answer. Um, I absolutely try to do my research. Um, I absolutely do not agree and feel like we as content creators or content journalists should be creating any type of distraction for the residents, with the residents, for the residents, none of that. We should be very respectful when we go into these spaces with the residents because this is their real life. I don't know how many times I have to say that. I don't know how many times I'm going to have to say that these are real people. This is their real life. And people are fed up and they're getting tired.
To get respect.
So as content creators, journalists, media, we need to start being very respectful going into these spaces.
First lady, you didn't see the live. God damn it.
To make sure that we get the facts correct. And if you don't know something, don't speak on it. Don't say anything.
Well, I guess we gonna let them cook.
Don't, don't.
We gonna
Don't make conjecture. Don't, don't be like
Don't strike me, super producer.
Or that. Just be like, I don't know. Because listen, I'll tell y'all quick. I don't know.
Gang Green gang.
I can find out for y'all. I'll get back to y'all. I'll find y'all the answer. I'll post it in my community page. We should be here like a doctor to do no harm. We should be here to keep the residents informed and to keep the facts, the facts. We absolutely should never be creating our own narratives. And that's what I've been seeing a lot lately. I've been seeing, I was put into a narrative that was not nowhere near. Correct. People were, had me plastered all over YouTube saying that me and Sheri, that Sheri told me the whole thing. Me and Sheri, no, me and Sheri, nothing. Because me and Sheri gonna be cool forever. Ain't nothing y'all could do about it. This YouTube stuff aside, super producer, don't do this for likes, clicks, and views. These people are my real friends. I really care about them and their life. I really want things to be better for them.
That's right.
I really do. That's why they can call me. Anyone from Dalton, anyone from the township, they can call me and ask me to get on my platform. Because I am absolutely here for the residents. I'm absolutely here to make the facts be known. And I'm just gonna let the facts be facts. I don't spin stories, narratives, none of that. I don't even answer beef, if you want to be honest. I don't, I don't answer beefs because I'm not gonna give, you gonna get attention when I say you get attention because I'm a boss.
And you know what, Kim? I'd go as far as to say what her boss say Tiffany because I just say, and you know, I just feel like she's working for Tiffany at this point. If you want the tea, get it from me. Okay? If you want the tea, get it from me. You're sitting here, you know, spreading lies. Um, if there was a problem, just come to me and talk to me like a grown woman. We can hash things out with no issues whatsoever. You know, it's just better that way. But, you know, they, they, they appear to want to stick with their nar- narrative and do this hearsay stuff. I don't do hearsay stuff. That has never been, um, something that I have ever done. I will go straight to the person themselves. And so for her to do what she did, yeah, you know, I don't mean to be yelling. Um, I'm very passionate when I get hurt or get angry. And so I have every reason to be because one thing
Talk your shit, Ms. Roberts.
My husband and I have been, um, there have been some false accusations on us. Yes, we've been having to go to court because it's something that Tiffany has done. Uh, and here she is, spreading one-sided story that Tiffany gives her. I don't play that game. If you want the story to get out
Y'all got the bling.
The whole story. I don't see her as a real journalist or whatever she want to call herself. I see her as a kid playing kid games at this point. And it is real life, uh, people's real life. This is real livelihood. This is people livelihood. I have children. I have grandchildren.
The lady from the Lansing Journal told her she wasn't no devilish.
I, I, I just don't. Yeah. Y'all know me. When I get passionate.
Now, this is the comment right here. Wonder Woman is in the comments and she's telling y'all, I know that I have gotten so much work done with YouTube ladies. Ask the question, what is being done to move us forward if it's nothing in nor? That's my, that's my, that's what I do. That's what I do. Now, listen. This is what I'm gonna ask of y'all. Now, don't you go over there in Dalton Politics. You start posting no mess. We don't need to be messy. Something here was cleared up. We're gonna leave it here. Because let me tell you, if I see something in Dalton Politics, I got time all night tonight. I got time. Because we not gonna do this. We not gonna do this. It, it is detrimental to the residents. It, it is not moving us forward. So if, if somebody posts something in Dalton Politics, we absolutely are not responding. Don't inbox me. Don't, don't send me no message. Don't, don't tag nobody. None of that. We not doing.
But if you saying you got time, that mean you got time to respond. You, you, you may have seen it wrong. You may have meant to say you ain't got time. Because yeah, that, that's where I got time, man. Like I'm up all night. I wish a bitch would. I thought you was on demon time for a second there. Until you just said you weren't gonna, uh, respond. There's like, oh. Okay. Shout out to the gang green gang.
Twenty. After today, I absolutely have to focus on getting this woman out of office. I don't have time for the beef. I need to keep you guys informed. I need to get you guys up to date on Roberts rules of order. We gotta unpack this, um, this meeting. I got a, I got a phone call that I need to make so that I can get the correct, I'm going directly to the source to find out what happened in today's meeting. So that I can bring you guys the correct information because we could not hear so well. Right to clerk Wells and Gunnar Laugle to request a special meeting to elect a temporary trustee. That's what I just did. Y'all do what Paul did. We working tonight. We absolutely in business mode. We working.
Right, that's what's
We not beefing tonight. We not addressing no beef. We working. Y'all see Paul said, write to the clerk. Paul, put the clerk's email address in the chat so that the people, and I'm gonna put it up on the screen, so that the people can send the email. If you live in the township, while you sitting here listening to me, send the email.
And let me say this. I'm not addressing any beefs. I'm not a part of that, but I'm putting a lie to bed and I'm leaving it at that. You aren't here to get for me.
We not going, we not doing this. I'm telling y'all, we not doing it. Super producer ain't never addressed no beef. She ain't about to start now. And I'm not going to address the beef. I'm addressing people in the comments and say, what did I ask y'all to do? Out of respect, I ask y'all to not do this because this is counterproductive to the residents. Okay? Silence is absolutely an answer. No comment is an answer. It's an answer. You know what the answer is? Stop trying me. Because when this is over, I'm gonna have time for you. Now, we up here. Now, we, we in a fight. We in a battle. We don't have time for this. We don't have time. This is counterproductive to the residents. This is, I don't, I don't, I don't address this stuff. We don't have time for it. Okay, so we not gonna do this. We not gonna address this. We not gonna worry about this. We let it go. We had a session where we needed to get, get some information out. We needed to get it out. Okay, we got it out. That's it.
That's it.
That's all. And I'm telling you now, I'm not gonna be addressing the person who made the post. I'm gonna be addressing the people who are in the comments commenting. Because if you don't comment, the post don't exist. And I'm telling you, the person will eventually take it down. We got work to do. Gotta stay focused. Clean house twenty twenty-five.
Yes.
Or anybody other than Little Snicker Booty. We, we absolutely don't have time for her slip in. People are being sent and people are, are, are doing things that don't make any sense. That can't have anything to do with me or you. We gotta stay focused. We gotta stay educated. We gotta stay informed. Okay? That's what we have to do. What we need to be doing is writing letters to the inspector general and asking them, how can a supervisor be a supervisor? What we need to be doing is writing letters to the inspector general and asking them, how can a supervisor be a supervisor and a mayor and they can't even be bonded? And carry insurance. We need to be writing the inspector general of Illinois and asking them. I've already written. You need to go to the inspector general of Illinois.
Alright, let me see. Yeah, I, I think that, I don't know if there is more roasting of the um of, of the Dingleberry. But y'all see where I was at, what the timestamp is over there on all in the queue, super producer? I can't think of the name of the. Oh, it's, it's the last one live that she did is titled, We Got Action. Yeah, fuck it. I got action. I'm sleeping. Going to bed. Do I have anything else? Nope, I think I got it all now. Yeah. I got it all. That I ain't got nothing else to say. To the next episode, ladies and gentlemen. We out.